Yeah.
Okay.
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Boy, this was a... We were not in sync tonight. Welcome, everyone. We will reconvene the meeting that we started a week ago. We tabled part of the meeting with regard to budget discussion, and that is what we're going to take up at this point in time. Anyone have any objection to the agenda before we go forward? Hearing no objections. Mark, we'll go to you. Why don't we put that mic so that's...
First of all, we have John Regeer from Lloyd Group on... He'll go through the budget. He'll be on the phone. He'll be here in person next week. But we just kind of drafted two potential budgets where John put them together. One would be capturing the fuel. One would be capturing the fuel R and R, the other would be dropping it down. And I would put it in mills, approximately like four mills, and go from 68.134 to 70. something. So with that, John, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Appreciate the opportunity tonight. My name is John Regeer. I'm a manager here with the Lloyd Group. The city has engaged the Lloyd Group to help prepare the budget for 2025. And again, like Mark said, there are two options in front of you. Not going to go page by page. I know you guys have had a chance to review this as part of your packet, but effectively, there's just a couple of changes on each one of those. So option one keeps your mill rate the same as it was in 2024 and fairly close to what it was in 2023. If you go to page 13, that'll be the best way to compare both of those on each of those budgets. And so, like I said, option one keeps that mill rate the same at 74, 783. Option two is just under a four-mill decrease from last year's mill rate. It still exceeds the revenue-neutral rate by oh, over about two mills, 2.7, 2.6 mills. But it is a reduction from last year's down to 70.8 mills. And the main difference in these two budgets are going to be that cash carryover that you would find on page 7A. It's about halfway into the entire page, pretty well two-thirds of the way down on that fund page itself. And so that's going to be that main difference in your budget for these two options here for 2025. If you would like, I'd go a little bit deeper down into it if you would like me to. If not, I would stand for any questions, and we can kind of just go through it that way if you would like.
John, this is Mike Powers. Just the... I understand why you showed us a budget that didn't change the mill levy. And I appreciate you showing us one that does. Was there any particular logic or thought process in why you kept it up about two and a half mills as opposed to three and a half or one and a half or whatever?
It was basically, you know, we just kind of were showing our... working our way down. You know, and like I said, if you look on that option two into page 7A, you know, your cash carryover is down a little bit, down into that 80... It's under 100,000 in cash carryover. And it's like, this is just the starting point. I guess I didn't say that, but this is the starting point. We set your ceiling when you did your notice of publication into the paper to hit that 10-day window for your budget hearing on September 16th. And so just wanted to give you two options tonight. I've done these where I have to send out four or five options, and that becomes a little bit of confusing to follow, and it's a little bit more of a pain across the board just to make sure we're talking about the same thing. So wanted to start with these two, get your guys' feedback, and then Mark and team there at Marion can send me any more changes, and then we can bring maybe another couple of options for your budget hearing night, should you want to go somewhere else with it. But just kind of wanted to give you a starting point. Basically, when I met with Mark and Janet last week, they just said, hey, let's leave one at the mill rate the same, kind of what, like I said, what was posted in your paper, and then let's do a four-mill reduction of where we were at, and then you kind of see where that's at. So, and I did reduce not only the general fund, I reduced the library just a bit, just so, you know, that's the two main levy sources, a little bit in-depth service, but I did reduce the library just a little bit, just to kind of... But I did it by percentage of total levy, so to try to make it bear across the board.
Mark, did you have anything that you wanted John to address or that you wanted to mention while he's on the phone with us?
Not in particular. We just kind of looked at it. You're going to be hiring some people. You're probably going to be paying more than you paid before, just the way the market is. So we just tried to give you guys a little bit of room with the two and a half mil or two mil, whatever that was.
Let's go to counsel then. Questions? I won't call on you. Just if you've got a question, identify yourself and ask it. I know you've got something, Tim.
It's pretty straightforward, just a question of which items to focus on. So that cash reserve difference between the two of them on 7A is just saying that's the difference, the amount of cash that will be held over at the start of 2025, correct?
That would be for the start of 2026.
For the start of 2026?
And it's just...
Yes.
Yeah, and it's just, and it's really hard when we're thinking about... We're in '24, we're talking about '25 budget, but it's actually, it'd be your January 1, 2026 cash amount. Now, this is just a projected amount, you know, we, you know, I'm not... That's not going to be a guarantee that that's what the city of Marion will carry over.
Sure.
If you compare it to your total unencumbered cash for '23 and '24, so if you're looking at page 7A, and you just go down into the left a little bit, you carried over 335,000 in the general fund in 2023 to start 2024, and we're projecting a carryover of 201,000 in 2024 to start 2025. And so that's just kind of where you have to think about as you go forward. We take it out of that cash carryover. It's just kind of a... It's an easy way to see, you know, what that does by lowering that mill rate. Like I said, not going to be... That's not going to set in stone exactly how much you'll carry over. I can't see the future. We all can't see the future of what you'll spend in 2025. Something may change partway through the year, and, you know, things may have to be reallocated or whatnot. So, but that's just, that's where it is, and that's a place where we like to show it as opposed to taking little bits out of each of those departments, unless that's kind of what the direction that the governing body wants.
I had another question on page seven, if you back up one page, on the local sales tax. It, previous year was like 248,000, about halfway down the line. Local sales tax, .075, that I'm assuming is going away, or... Because then for 2025, it is zero. Just curious about that.
Yeah, so that, that .075 is the industrial promotion sales tax that's been around for quite a while. I don't know the... I can't remember the exact year off the top of my head. But what we did for 2025 is we created an industrial promotion fund, and so that sales tax isn't going away, it's just going to go into its own fund. So it's an easier way to see the tracking of those expenditures. So it's actually, if you start on, if you go to page 12 on either of them, it goes into that fund itself, and then the city can make directions based upon the sales tax resolution that was passed to work those expenditures and to expend out those funds. So that's, it's just moving into a new fund to see where, to show where it's going.
Okay, good. That was my second question, because that was on that other page. I was just clarifying where those numbers were coming from.
I think Lloyd said that was the question last year, that was kind of the thought process.
And the reason we're doing it in '25 as opposed to '24 is because we're setting the '25 expenditure limits. If we started moving that money in '24, they have, there's no authority to spend. So we're creating that authority to spend by creating that fund in '25. And I know that team there at Marion will be able, will reach out if they need help building that fund and working through with our group and probably a lot of discussions with the governing body there too of how to move forward with those funds.
John, with regard to the definition of what would qualify for industrial promotion, that seems like a pretty broad term to me. Am I correct?
And I will say that I am not a lawyer. I have not passed the bar, and I don't want to pass the bar. When I read it, it does seem a little broad. Our recommendation would be is to reach out to, I believe Gilmore and Bell helped create that. They're still a law firm that's in the Wichita area. I actually worked with them. I was at the school district down here in Derby for five years. I actually worked with a few lawyers down there. So my recommendation, our recommendation would be to reach out to them and get their interpretation and their legal ease on that to know what is, what able to be spent. Let you guys get a list of it, and then you guys can make those decisions as a group.
Okay. Counsel, other questions, comments? I mean, we can talk, continue to talk about this, but I don't know that we need to have John on the phone while we're doing it unless you just want to.
Nothing can be happening. If he has time, he has a little bit of time before he has to be somewhere else.
Oh, okay, fair enough. Well, let's, let me just, I will just go down the road. We'll start with you, Tim. Between option one and option two, does either one appeal to you particularly? Or would you like to have our accountants prepare an option three?
Option two appeals more to me. Just keeping the total amount of the taxes a little bit tighter and not raising it up as much was appealing to me. I don't want to cut the library fund too much, but this is still going to be increasing the library's revenues to the library over last year. It's not cutting it, correct?
Yes.
It's still over what it's going to be from the previous year, and kind of similar, it was raised from '23 to '24, if I remember.
Correct. Yeah, so it was at 23,000... Oops, sorry, that was debt service. I'm sorry. It was at 90,000. It looks like 894. Looks like my ink's running dry on my side. But then it goes to 93,000. So it's still a bit of an increase, and we still want to levy a little bit more than we did last year because that helps you be eligible for that state library grant. So we want to keep that going. We don't want to jeopardize any of that.
Yep.
So... And we could even, if you want to see something a little bit different, if we think option one's a little too rich for, not rich, but a little too high from where we're expecting, we could maybe keep option two and do one a little bit, maybe one that's in between option one and option two for an option three. But we'd be happy to prepare anything else.
Anything else, Tim?
No.
Kevin?
I'm probably a little bit the same way. I think the option two at least will help people out some on your taxes and stuff as long as it doesn't, you know, cut us too short. I like the idea of, over the last year, where we, you know, added some cash reserves and stuff there. Like Mark had made the comment, if anything comes up matching, you know, if we had a grant available, it'd be nice to have some funds around if something were there. I'd hate to miss out on something because we were trying to cut it too lean, but...
Anything else? Zach?
I'm probably leaning more option two. I agree. I'm not wild about having to cut cash reserves, but at the same time, I don't want to raise our taxes up. So I probably lean towards option two. Do... This one would not, I know last week we kind of had it.
You have your mic on?
Oh, no, I don't. Sorry. Thank you.
People on the internet are cussing you.
Yeah, they are. I said option two.
We discussed last week the potential of a, like, looking at a street sweeper and trying to get some feedback on that. That is not included in either of these. Is that correct?
I talked with Mark about that, and I don't know if Mark mentioned any of that to John or not, but we talked today before the meeting, and the difference between a revenue-neutral amount and the option-two amount would, I don't know that it would be, it probably, it wouldn't necessarily be a payment for what we're anticipating a street sweeper would cost on a lease purchase, but it would be a big chunk of a payment.
Okay.
It'd be about 45,000 over seven years, if I remember correctly, per year, to lease a purchase of new one.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Amy, do you have your mic on?
I do now. I think I'm kind of leaning, kind of same reasoning, option number two. And I guess my concern was the library, but Tim addressed that concern, so.
When we first started thinking about this, my thought had always been, don't raise the mill levy if you don't have to. Now, we've been blessed, I guess, by the fact that the valuations have gone up, so our income has gone up even though we haven't raised the mill levy. So we were in a position where we can cut the mill levy and still have a little bit more money. And I, that's why I think option two is probably the ticket. It would be a matter whether we, you know, we could do another option and keep a little bit more, or we could do another option and make revenue-neutral. But there would go the opportunity to have that little bit of extra money to get something, whether it's a street sweeper or some other piece of equipment that we need. So I think what, John, I think what we're saying is we probably are okay with these options, and we'll talk with you more next week.
Awesome. That sounds like a plan, because if something comes up in the meantime, feel free to reach out. We'd be happy to make anything, any other changes if you would like.
Okay, don't get in a hurry. Don't hang up yet.
I know, no, I know. I was, I kind of freaked out. I put myself on mute. I'm on dad duty right now, so I'm trying to avoid any ruckus getting into the, into the meeting that's happening here. So I just kind of went off onto my own little tangent. No, be happy to continue to stay on at this point.
Well, I don't know how long you need to, but before you went, I wanted to just make sure. Mark, is there anything else that you wanted to address with John?
No, I think he hit it all. And again, he'll be here next week.
Okay. And counsel, anyone, anything else? John, I think you are free to go, so go be dad.
All right. I appreciate the time tonight. I appreciate the flexibility to call in. I'll be there in person for your budget hearing next Monday at 5:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
You, too. So this is the only item on the agenda for tonight. So we have, at this point, counsel, the opportunity just to discuss on our own if there's anything else anyone wants to say or questions that you would like to have Mark get answers to before next week.
I just kind of have some general questions about where certain personnel net fall under which budget. So general administrative, that'll be like the city administrator, the city clerk, probably us. The department heads, those, do they fall under their own, like, for instance, the public works? Would that be a general administrative too, or is that fall under the...
He is split out. Tim's position is split out.
Are multiple people split out like that?
Yeah.
Is Mr. Masters our, the city inspector? Correct. What is he under, you know, or is he split out too?
I don't know.
Probably split out a little bit.
I thought he was, so, okay. Police, the chief of police, then, would that be under the police department or is that a general administrative?
No, police.
That's all under police, okay. Yeah, I was just trying to look at where these things are going to be falling for personnel expenses with that.
Some of these, like, I think you've been down some police officers. These are, you have to assume, I think you have five authorized positions. These are five authorized positions.
Okay.
You haven't been there for quite a while, I think.
And with the, I'm assuming you budgeted in plenty for the cemetery, for the wall that was falling down on the option two, that fell under the cemetery budget.
Well, we're looking potentially at this year.
We're going to try and do.
Oh, you can all take care of this year, not worry about it next budget, okay. Because I noticed the cemetery budget looked like it was up a bit. I don't know if that accounted for that.
It is because we have two guys now in the cemetery. There's still maybe one, and now we're up to two.
Okay. Another smaller thing was the cap, special parts fund. So what is it? Half of our alcohol sales tax goes to the special fund for the park. But I noticed, it looks like it's just accumulating each year. Does that ever get transferred out to be used for the park fund? Because I was just noticing on the special account that we have formed for it, I don't think the last few years, I think it's just been, it's not a huge number.
No, it's not.
It could be. I don't think it has.
So that's just one thing that I didn't know, just to point out. It's a pretty minor factor, but... That I noticed on that. Wasn't really a question. I was just kind of curious if...
I don't think it's ever been transferred out. I think it's just carried.
15,000 then, potentially for, you know, the parks budget.
Yeah.
What it's going to be used for, it just hasn't transferred out.
Right.
Also, I noticed the court, if you go to page seven, the courts, fines, bonds, and diversions, that one had gone up from last year, for this year, and then remained high. Was there some change that, which, this is going back a year, was there some change that caused that to go up?
On which one are you talking about?
The court and bond fines on page seven, under the general funds. Like, in 2023, it was at 6,353, and it went up to 22,500, which is what we're budgeting. This would be budgeting for in 2025. I'm just curious if, was that, what made that go?
Look into that. I don't know.
Yeah, which, we're going back another year to 2023. I just, it was just a change that I noticed. I was just curious.
Well, in 2023, we were down to like two police officers at one point, so we probably didn't have much...
So the police would probably come in for some of that.
Money coming in for fines, right.
Okay.
Write as many tickets.
Write as many tickets. There you go. That was my main question.
Anyone else have anything? Either a question or a comment? I might mention, I got to find it again. The... Whoops.
Well, I was looking, another question I had was, we typically will transfer out money for what, we'll establish so much per year for the streets and alleys. Was that going to remain the same with that option two as far as having the funds available for budgeting, was it two blocks a year for street replacement? That was still going to keep that?
Same as this year or...
Try to increase a little bit, as I recall.
Try to increase a little, no matter what, just with inflation, but...
Well, I think this year was down from previous year.
It was down, as I understand.
Yeah.
Okay. So it would be taken back up higher than it is now?
It'd be higher, yeah.
I found what I was looking for, what Tim brought up earlier about the new fund, the industrial promotion. And I had asked about what qualifies under that, or what could come out of that, and what would that be used for. One thing I don't have any doubt we could use it for is economic development director. I think that's the fund that that position would be paid from. And so that's something we need to be thinking about because I know that there is definite sentiment in town, particularly among the merchants, to get that person hired and going. So... Zach? Anything?
Nope, I don't have any.
Amy? I don't know if I asked you.
No, you did.
I'll ask another question.
Okay, we can count on you, Tim.
On sales tax, I know this is a little different than with our budget, but with our sales tax, our rates, are we, the way I understand it, looking at, are we down a half a percent over everyone else in the county? Are we at like seven and a half percent? Everywhere else is at eight. Is that correct?
We're at 8.25.
8.25, which is, so that's that three-quarters of a percent is showing up that's not on other cities' budget, probably, from when I was looking at them. Because I thought they were, that's correct.
Theirs all show, what, seven and a half?
I think eight. I'd have to look.
I think it's what the state is, seven and a half, sales tax, and then we can...
Look, state's six and a half.
State's six and a half?
State's six and a half, county's one.
County's one.
Most of the communities in the county are a full percent above that, so they're mostly at 8.5. Hillsboro, Peabody, and Florence are all 8.5.
There you go. And that's that three, that's the three-quarters of a percent sales tax.
So we're a quarter percent lower than everyone else in the county here in Marion.
Except rural areas. County lakes is a quarter of a percent lower than the city.
For other municipalities, then?
They chose to go one percent on their sales tax.
So I just noticed that, and I'm just pointing that out to, to consider.
Are you suggesting that be considered, or...
I don't know that that falls under when making the budget. I mean, that decision wouldn't have to fall under making the budget, but it could affect it a little. It's not that that's going to be a huge number.
It'd be a special election.
It'd be a special election, like, but I just want to point out where money's coming from. That's one thing I noticed was 100% different.
Okay.
Majority is my question.
Mark? Jim? With that, then, I think we are ready for public forum. If anyone wishes to comment on anything, this is the opportunity.
Do you want me to run the timer, please, as I got it?
Yes, please do. That would be great.
I'll tell you when.
Earn your money.
And I'll let you know in 30 seconds or so.
Ruth Herbl, and I just have a few questions. What is the recreation program?
Ruth, I have no problem with you having those questions. I really think that would be more appropriate. I mean, if somebody wants to answer that, that's fine, but, and I know that was in your letter.
No, it's in the budget.
No, I know that, but you asked that question in your email.
Right, but I'd like to know where that money's going.
Okay, that's fine.
Art in the park, holiday, or holiday, what is it?
Holly Jolly.
Holly Jolly Christmas.
Those kind of activities?
Personnel, it's under personnel.
Yes, well, part of Margot's, yes. Part of the director goes under that, yes.
$83,000.
Frankly, folks, I don't think this is the meeting for those kinds of questions. Those specific questions are fine to be asked. I think that's next week.
Okay, I'll ask them next week, then.
Okay, that's fine. I'm not trying to run you off. Anyone else, anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
On favor, aye?
Aye.
Puzzled, nay? Ayes, have it. Foes nay, ayes have it.
Oh, God.